Good evening, welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, September sixth, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. We will start with the pledge of allegiance, if you stand for that, and then followed by the invocation with Pastor Jay Dunston, Bellevue Christian Center.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, you guys can just turn the floor over. And we, Bellevue, just thank you so much for today, and God, we thank you for bringing us all here together for this very important time. Now, we just pray that as we get down into business tonight, God, that you would just grant wisdom and knowledge.
To each person that's represented in each, um, each matter that we're gonna be looking at tonight, I just pray, God, that you would, you would just show your favor. God, we pray blessings over the city of Bellevue, God, and those who are, are working hard to continue to make it better. God, we pray that you would bring prosperity to the city, God, that you continue to do amazing things and works, God, that you would continue to grow and, and make new and make changes. And God, that, that would improve the life and the livelihood of those who call this city home. God, I pray that you would be with our mayor and those who represent our city council this evening. God, I pray that you would just be with each agenda item tonight that's covered. God, that your blessing would just be upon this time together. Lord, we just thank you for, for everything that you're doing, in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Jay. I'll call the meeting to order, Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Councilman Casey.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch. Thank you.
Thank you, this meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda consent agenda claims and advisory committee reports, five A, approval of the agenda, do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns, any comments or questions? Please vote.
Doesn't wanna take the vote, let me just do this manually. Councilman Casey.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman McCaw.
Yes.
Councilman Preister.
Yes.
And Councilman Burns.
Yes.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item five B, approval of the consent agenda, items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. And do I motion for the consent agenda? Councilman Burns?
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Burns, second by Casey. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
I'm gonna take it manually again. Casey.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
McCaw.
Yes.
Preister.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item seven, special presentation, seven A, presentation on the two thousand twenty-two second quarter report with Groserp, Andrew Rainbow.
Good evening, Andrew Rainbow, Executive Director of Groserp, thanks for having me. And so this is our, uh, it's our second quarter report, but it is really kind of the overlook at the fir- first half of two thousand twenty-two. Uh, and so, uh, I, I'll, I'll be brief, I know you guys have, uh, a lot of actual work on the agenda tonight. So just to kind of give you a snapshot of where we're at, so far this year, uh, in building permit valuations, which is, which we always caveat as saying it's not, uh, an exact, uh, uh, it's not, it's, we use it as a proxy for, uh, capital investment. These are billing permit valuations don't always exactly reflect what the capital investment is, but that's what we've got, so that's what we use. Uh, and in the first half, uh, so far this year, uh, well, actually, I'm looking at the second quarter, I apologize. The second quarter, Bellevue had, had a very good quarter, almost fifty million dollars in, uh, in billing permit valuations as compared to thirty million last year. Uh, and, uh, the second, in Sarpy County as a whole, had four hundred sixty million, uh, but that compares to a billion of last year, there is up on the screen right now. But, uh, last year, we had two, uh, major data center, uh, permits come in at about the same time. And so that really made us had, had, uh, an amazing amount of capital investment last year. Uh, so it's not a bad, when you compare that to, uh, what we've done in the last few years, uh, it's actually quite good. Uh, and so on the single family housing permit side, uh, for the second quarter, uh, Bellevue had, excuse me, I'm skipping, skipping around here a little bit. On the single family housing platted lots side, uh, Bellevue had a couple of, of bigger projects come in. Uh, and also on the platted lots for industrial parks, Bellevue had several projects come in. I would say that our, our pipeline for, uh, lots for business parks is quite small. And so, uh, it's, it's great to see this come in, we've been submitting these, uh, several of these sites in Bellevue for quite some time. Uh, and they've really got a lot of attention lately, uh, when you look across the county for where people can, can build, uh, new industrial or, or flex type buildings. Uh, those properties have been snatched up, and so there's a, a, a lot of competition for that right now. Uh, Bellevue, I think you've got something on the agenda tonight for some, some property that, uh, we've been submitting for sites for a long time. So on the good side, we're gonna see, uh, new buildings built. On, on the backside of that pipeline is, we just across the county don't have a lot of raw ground for, um, for, for, for anyone that's coming to market that wants to build and own their own building. Uh, as a result of, you know, rental rates for industrial property have pretty much doubled over the last four, five years. And so we've got a lot of interest from developers who wanna build that product that they can lease out. Uh, and so that's, that is, is a, a good, uh, um, it's good to have in our pocket. And, but when it comes to new ground that's coming online, that's gonna be developable for somebody who wants to build, uh, maybe a custom building or, uh, have their own property, uh, their own project that's on, maybe on the larger side. We just don't really have a lot of, of projects to submit, or properties to submit, I should say, and therefore we're missing out on projects from, from that perspective. So, uh, I think we'll continue to see, uh, in- interest from, uh, those developers that want, wanna build flex or, uh, spec buildings. Uh, rates are high, uh, and, uh, uh, s- the supply is still relatively low, we've got a really low, uh, vacancy rate there. And so we'll con- to continue to see that pressure, I just don't know exactly where they're gonna go. Uh, and so that's kind of a, the, the thirty thousand square foot view. Uh, on the multi fa- on the housing side, I mentioned platted lots, um, let me, let me, if you wanna go to the next page on that report. We'll look at, uh, down a little bit more on the housing permits side there. Uh, Bellevue ha- has so far year-to-date, is, is about on pace with last year, they've got ninety, uh, s- single family housing permits issued as compared to a hundred ten last year. The county is also about, uh, on, on pace too, we've a little over what we were doing last year. Uh, I'd say overall, both Bellevue and the county are having, uh, nearly as good of a year as we did last year, which was one of the best that we've ever had. Uh, and so I think that bodes well for, uh, for good, for the rest of the year as well. Um, on the multi-family h- side, uh, that comes in bunches, and so we had a bunch come in this year, which included a, a, a large, I'm guessing that's one large project in Bellevue. And so for, uh, for that, we're also a little bit ahead of where we were last year as well. Uh, housing is, is quite tight, as I'm sure everybody knows, and affordable housing is an issue that we're finding ourselves, uh, our organization get pulled in to try to help solve that ish, uh, issue. Which is, uh, not easy to do, but, uh, we love to help find an answer to that locally. Uh, we've got, we hear from employers all the time that people are driving further and they're recruiting further away for people to, to work in Sarpy County. Uh, and their concern is that those people aren't as sticky as people who live locally, cuz they're driving past a lot of other good employers to get to their, their shop. So, uh, it's an issue that can continue to impact our ability to attract pro- uh, large projects as well. Um, with that, I think I'll ask if anybody has any questions in particular. I will say, um, I did work on two projects just today, and both of those were, uh, were looking squarely at Bellevue and, and only at Bellevue. So, um, I think you guys have got property coming online that will be, um, well valued by users and employers.
So Andrew, the, um, I mean, you look at Sarpy, you got a lot, lot of land out there, but there's no project sites, um, is that, that's all due to infrastructure, correct?
Correct, yeah, uh, pretty much, uh, the area where a lot of projects have been landing over the last few years, the hi- highway fifty corridor, uh, the, the, pretty much every site that can be sewed, uh, is, is, uh, under control by a developer or a project at this time. So we'll continue to see those projects get built out, but as far as new, new ones landing, if you wanted to be out by, by I eighty right now, there's really just not a, a spot you could, you could buy a spot, there's places for sale. You just probably can't connect to a sewer for a few years.
Okay. Any other questions for Andrew? All right, appreciate your report.
Thank you.
Okay, item nine, there is, uh, we did not receive any citizen communication request, no liquor licenses for number ten. Item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading, eleven A, ordinance number four one zero six, and ordinance to adopt the annual appropriations bill. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one zero six, an ordinance to adopt the budget statement to be termed the annual appropriations bill to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities to provide for an effective date.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we table item eleven A, eleven A one, eleven A two, eleven A three to September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two at four thirty P M.
Second.
Okay, motion by Cook, second by Burns to table items eleven A, eleven A one, eleven A two, and eleven A three to the September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two meeting, special meeting at four thirty. Uh, any questions or comments? Please vote.
I vote yes.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item twelve, uh, ordinances for public hearing, second reading, we have none this evening. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading, thirteen A, ordinance number four one zero seven, request to rezone the irregular westerly seven hundred and twenty-four point sixty-seven feet of tax lot eleven located in the northwest quarter of section fourteen, and the irregular tract in the northwest corner of tax lot twelve located in the southwest quarter of section one, or section fourteen, except rights of way, all located in township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the six P M. Sarpy County, Nebraska, from A G to M L for the purpose of industrial development, applicant H R C Development LLC. Location Fort Crook Road and Fairview Road, Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one zero, four one zero seven, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by article three of ordinance number forty-one zero four, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Fort Crook Road and Fairview Road, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, the second reading and public hearing will be September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. Item thirteen B, ordinance number four one zero eight, request to amend section five dot two-three, city of Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding permitted uses in the B G M zoning district regarding multifamily residential density, applicant is Alex Perry. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number forty-one zero eight, an ordinance to amend section five point two-three, ordinance number forty-one oh four, Bellevue zoning ordinance relating to allowable multifamily residential density in the B G M Metropolitan General Business District to repeal such sections as heretofore existing to provide an effective date of the ordinance.
Thank you, the second reading and public hearing will be September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two at six o'clock P M. Item thirteen C, ordinance number four one zero nine, request to rezone lot one, Roca de Salvation Edition being a replat of lots one, two, and three, block one, Vil- Vase Hill Haven Edition, and the south forty feet of lot three, and all of lots four, five, and six. Blocks two, Vase Hill Haven Edition, together with half of vacated thirty-seventh street adjacent ther- adjacent thereto from BG and RS seventy-two to RS seventy-two for the purpose of a church, applicant Fortino Ramirez, general location eight eight zero six, South Thirty-Sixth Street. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one zero nine, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by article three of ordinance number forty-one zero four, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about eighty-eight oh six, South Thirty-Sixth Street, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, second reading and public hearing will be September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances, fourteen A, recommend approval of event application for Greater Bellevue Area Chamber of Commerce, Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation for Nebraska's Official Veterans Parade on Saturday, November fifth, two thousand twenty-two, from seven A M to twelve P M, utilizing Mission Avenue to Franklin Street, ending at Washington Park. And I will open up fourteen A for public hearing, is there anyone here to speak regarding fourteen A, please come forward? Anyone wanting to speak regarding fourteen A, please come forward? Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing, do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we, uh, approve the event application for the Greater Bellevue Area Chamber of Commerce, Bellevue Economic Enh- Enhancement Foundation for Nebraska's Official Veterans Parade on Saturday, November fifth, two thousand twenty-two, from seven A M to twelve P M, utilizing Mission Avenue to Franklin Street, ending at Washington Park.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Cook. Any comments, discussion? Please vote.
My computer's operator must be having a malfunction, so I'll have to vote by voice. Yes.
Rich, is yours going through? Did yours go? Okay. All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, appropriate timing here, talking about capital improvements, we might need to make another improvement. Fourteen B, request to approve the two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-eight capital improvement plan, applicant city of Bellevue. Is there anyone here to speak regarding the capital improvement plan, fourteen B, please come forward? Anybody wanting to speak regarding fourteen B, please come forward? Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion to table vote to September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two at four thirty P M.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns to table item fourteen B until September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two at four thirty P M, here in the council chamber, is any discussion? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, uh, Council President Cook. Uh, perhaps for the public who may not be aware, uh, we did have a new state statute go into effect creating some additional meeting and accountability, and perhaps somebody could just update us so people are aware of why we're doing this.
I can give a brief update, L B six forty-four passed, which basically added different requirements. We have a joint public hearing with Sarpy County and other agencies scheduled, um, for our tax request on September twenty-second two thousand twenty-two at six oh five P M at the Papillion La Vista High School, south. Is it south, Rich? Okay, south. Uh, so that's on the twenty-second, we cannot pass our property tax request until after that joint public hearing. So in order to be able to receive the input from the public at that joint public hearing, we thought that it would be best to continue the budget, property tax requests, and the capital improvement until after that hearing, um, so that if this council, um, changes their mind on anything, that we have the opportunity to address it after that joint hearing.
Thank you, I think that is a responsible and responsive way to do it, because if we pass it and then the public has concerns, it doesn't look like we're even paying attention to the things that they say. So I think this is being very responsible, and though this legislation was passed, it just went into effect. So we didn't really have a whole lot of time to prepare for it. Uh, but I think our staff did a good job, and I appreciate the work that we're doing at this point, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Preister, and Bree, any other comments? Okay, motion by Cook, second by Burns to table to the September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two meeting at four thirty, please vote.
Yes.
There it came, no? Yeah, it's still spinning, oh, there it came. All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you, item fourteen C, request to final plat lots one through nine, Fontanel Hills Estates being a replat of lot one, Fontanel replat eight, lots twelve, thirteen, sixteen, seventeen, nineteen, fifty-five A, two thirty-three, and two thirty-four, Fontanel, and half of vacated Laurel Lane, applicant Hawkins and Strong Holdings LLC, general location Martin Drive and Ridgewood Drive, Martin Drive and Ridgewood Court. And I will open up fourteen C, if there's anyone here to speak regarding that, please come forward. State your name and address, and please sign in.
Dwayne Safari, two oh three Bellevue Boulevard, South Bellevue, six eight zero zero five. I've been asked by the owners of the land to represent them tonight to, um, on the proposal for the Fontanel Hills Estates lots, to see if there's any additional questions or any additional, uh, requirements that need to be met of what's been submitted to this point.
Okay. So Dwayne is here for questions, is there anybody else wanting to speak regarding fourteen C? Please come forward. Public hearings open for fourteen C, please come forward if you wanna speak. Uh, council, have any questions for Mr. Safari, Councilman Cook?
I don't have a question, I just wanna make a comment, uh, Dwayne, I think what the owners have proposed here is probably the best way for the use of this land. And I, and I'm, I'm sure glad that the owners, they have been at some previous meetings, couple of them have spoke, I think they've been very transparent, very, uh, available to, uh, some people that maybe didn't like the setup, but I think they were very transparent and available to anybody that would wanna meet with them, discuss it. And I think this is probably about the best thing that could come out of the land, under these u- unique circumstances of being, you know, part of the old golf course. So I appreciate their work and also yours, thank you.
Thank you. I've met with a number of the neighbors, uh, personally and over the phone to discuss, uh, opportunities that are there, and, um, some positive, some negative, but I think most of them are, have term positive, because the alternative would be options that they don't wanna have. So, um, for, you know, whether multifamily or, you know, more density, so I think they're in agreement at this point.
Okay, uh, last call for public hearing on fourteen C, anybody else wanna speak, please come forward? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll take a motion, Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve fourteen C.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by McCaw. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
This is ruining my re- my, uh, total time here, response average. Fifteen A resolutions, fif- fifteen resolutions, fifteen A, resolution number two zero two two dash two-six, request to declare as blighted and substandard lot twenty-one A, Old Orchard Place, lot three, Old Orchard Place one, lots one and two, Old Orchard Place two, lots one, two, and three, Old Orchard Place three, lots four and five, High School View, and tax lot eight A, all located in the southeast quarter of section twenty-two, township fourteen north, range thirteen east, Sarpy County, Nebraska, applicant Habitat for Humanity of Sarpy County Inc., looking, or general location, Tenth Street and Casper Street. And I will open up fifteen A for public hearing, if there's anyone here.
Good, uh, good evening, I'm Mike Metica, uh, attorney for Habitat for Humanity, uh, my address is one zero two five zero, Regency Circle, Suite five two five. Also here this evening is Mr. Dan Brewer, uh, from Habitat. Uh, if it'd be possi- would it be possible to put the map of the area from our application? And while we're doing that, I, I'd like to maybe address a couple questions that often come up, uh, general questions regarding Habitat for Humanity. One, Habitat, uh, sells the homes to the homeowners, they don't give them away. Uh, the homeowners, uh, get a thirty-year low-interest mortgage, uh, but they, for, they have to repay. Habitat does extensive screening and training to make sure the homeowners can afford and maintain, uh, the home. And the homeowners are required to put in three hundred and fifty hours of sweat equity, and it's cliche, but it really is a hand up and, and not a handout. Uh, the other question that often comes up is property taxes, uh, homeo- well, Habitat is a nonprofit, they're paying property taxes on this, and they will continue to pay property taxes on it until they sell the lots. Uh, the area, uh, the outlined area is the area we're requesting the blighted and substandard designation for. Uh, the development is gonna be on, uh, lot twenty-one, and then a portion, which is the really big lot, and then a portion of tax lot eight, which is the long rectail lot below that. Um, they're gonna, uh, be building, uh, sixty-seven, uh, affordable homes. The, um, the factors, uh, under the statute for blighted and substandard, if, I'm sure you're familiar with them, uh, it's a long list of things. Uh, there's both subjective factors and other Uh, it's a long list of things. Uh, there's both subjective factors and objective factors, and you don't have to have them all. You just need to have at least one of the subjective and one of the objective. We'll go through some of them, uh, kind of quickly, and then to the extent you have questions, you know, we're here to answer those, those questions. One of the factors is the existence of defective or inadequate street layout, faulty lot layout, uh, in relation to size, adequacy, accessibility, or usefulness, obsolete plating. These are the language from the statute. Well, this area was actually platted in eighteen eighty-seven. At first I thought that was a typo, but I checked the real estate records and it's correct. As a result, uh, we have some lots, uh, in this area that do not have access to an improved public street or direct access to an improved public street. We also have, uh, the streets from the south being blocked, uh, by Lot twenty-one or Lot Eight, or Tax Lot Eight A, so there's no circulation, uh, to Casper Street, which creates unsafe conditions for emergency vehicles, and, uh, there's dense vegetation on a large part of, uh, Lot twenty-one, and, uh, without really good access from anywhere, which creates opportunity for illegal activities, uh, dumping. Um, there's a lack of a sidewalk on Casper Street, which, given the proximity to, uh, the high school, uh, yeah, creates an unsafe condition. There's no stormwater access, so on Lot twenty-one, all of the runoff goes to the east, and, uh, it causes erosion and runoff onto neighboring properties. Yeah, there's, uh, basically, this kind of fits the, uh, you know, in terms of having an infill project and correcting these things, it kind of, it fits right into the, what the statute's trying to do, because the statute refers to conditions that, impairs the sound growth of the community, uh, impairs the provision of housing accommodations, and is detrimental to public health and safety. Now, the statute has some, a list of objective factors, and you have to have at least one, you know, things that are measured numerically. And the one this meets is that it says the average age of the residential or commercial units in the area is at least forty years. And so in our, uh, included area, uh, from, records from the county assessor, the average age of the residential buildings is eighty-five point eight years, and so we definitely meet, uh, that requirement. The factors for substandard are, uh, very similar, uh, to what we had just talked about. Uh, the, uh, again, it comes down to existence of conditions which may endanger life or property by fire or other causes, uh, and, um, is detrimental to public health, safety, uh, and so, um, we believe, uh, this meets the requirements of the statute, and, uh, if there's any questions, uh, we'd be glad to answer, answer that.
Uh, Mr. Metecca, you said, uh, low-interest home loans. What is low-interest?
Uh, perhaps Dan can answer that. Better.
Yeah. Yeah, if you'd come up to the mic, that'd be great.
It varies a little bit, but generally it's below five percent. Two point six five, I believe, is our current, uh, rate, and it can, it can change.
Okay.
But that as an average, that's, that's what it is.
Would you state your name and address for the record, sorry?
Dan Brewer, uh, twenty-seven oh six North Ninety-seventh Avenue, Omaha.
And then just sign in. Sorry, I made you do that. Uh, any more questions for the applicant? Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. It's informative. I'm just wondering, I believe you stated that the large, kind of barren-looking area is going to be developed, and then the area just below that. What about the area to the west on my, in your left on the picture? That seems to be included.
We included it into the blighted and, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, we included it in, in the blighted and substandard area because it, it fits the, uh, definition of blighted and substandard. Uh, Habitat does not own those lots right now, and of course, the lots on Casper are acreages, uh, but the, um, uh, there's the lots, uh, kind of to the south of the acreages, especially the two that are right there closest to the high school, is a party Habitat has talked to. You know, so there's not a present, uh, plan for that, or they don't have it under contractual control. But we included it in the area because it does meet the definition of blighted and substandard. And the area that is blighted and substandard can be larger than the, uh, the actual area that will be developed with the present development.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay.
Lost it, but... Oh, you, you had mentioned that you're currently paying property tax, and until it's sold, after it's sold, could you elaborate?
Well, yeah, and once it's sold, then the property owners have to pay the property taxes. Uh, and, and of course, that's what makes the TIF work. Uh, if, uh, if they don't pay the property taxes, then, uh, we're not going to get the benefit from the TIF.
Right, and, and for some people who didn't know whether it would be on or off the tax.
Yeah, but yeah, definitely the property is on the tax rolls now and is going to stay on the tax rolls.
Okay, and is all this land currently owned by Habitat?
Uh, Habitat owns Lot twenty-one, which is the big lot. Uh, and has the, a portion of Lot Eight, which is the long, kind of rectangular lot to the south of Lot twenty-one, has a portion of that under contract. Uh, the, uh, the owners of that lot have a house right at the eastern edge of that lot, and they're going to, uh, stay there. That lot, uh, or you know, after it's subdivided, the portion of the lot that where the residence is, is going to be part of the plat, you know, in terms of making, getting the lot lines drawn and everything, and technically will be part of the, the TIF district. Uh, but, um, that, that house is staying, and the owners are staying there. And, uh, well, now, then they'll also have access, direct access to a public street, which they do not have now.
And thank you for working and checking with the neighbors, and as the development goes in, they'll obviously have questions, so I, I like the good work that Habitat does and appreciate you bringing this forward.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing is open. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak regarding fifteen A? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve resolution number twenty-two-two dash twenty-six.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Just a little history on that. Uh, speaking of inactivity, my parents, when they bought their property down south, they bought five acres. This was the other piece of ground they were looking at back in nineteen fifty-eight, so it's been sitting there, available since then, so. Motion by Cook, second by McCaw. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fifteen B, resolution number two zero two-two dash two-seven, request to approve the redevelopment plan for lots one and three, Civic Center Plaza, replat one, applicant Mercury Property Management, Inc., general location, Washington Street and Mission Avenue. And I will open up the public hearing for fifteen B. If there's anyone that would like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address, and sign in.
Good evening. Andrew Willis, two thirty-three South Thirteenth Street in Lincoln, on behalf of the applicant redeveloper. The redevelopment plan before you tonight, um, is, is the redevelopment, it's a mixed-use building, uh, redevelopment of the, you know, former public city, city property on Mission Avenue in Old Town. This is really a kind of exciting project for the area. I know it's been on the, uh, it's been looked at for a while. This, this specific, uh, building would be four stories, um, roughly about twenty thousand square foot footprint, so first floor commercial, about nineteen thousand to twenty thousand square feet, uh, you know, retail, restaurant, uh, mix on the first floor, then three floors of residential above that, fifty-three units in total, approximately, so you know, just, uh, that's what the plans are right now. It'd be about, about, um, eight, two bedrooms on each floor, and, and ten one-bedrooms on each floor, so uh, kind of a nice mix there of one and two bedrooms. That's kind of, you know, so that's the, that's the overall proposed project. Uh, it's about, it's gonna be about a twelve and a half or twelve point three million dollar project, looking at it, and that's why really to make this work, uh, we're coming forward with the redevelopment plan, looking and, and requesting the use of tax increment financing. As you see in the plan, you know, a lot of this is, this is, you know, this, this old town area has been, they've been looking, this, there's been plans for this and a desire to use of this. It fits in really well with the comprehensive plan. Future land use of this site is designated as an activity center for commercial and mixed use. The kind of proposed, proposed, uh, renderings are included in there. As I mentioned, it's, it's commercial first floor, then three floors of residential. You know, there, there'll be some, you know, may also include some streetscape improvements, outdoor courtyard space. That's really, um, to be determined as designed with the city, but again, the, the goal here is really to be a catalyst to this old town redevelopment, and this building uh, should, should be a, a really good, uh, a really good project for that. Um, looking at the, the tax increment financing itself, and the request, you know, made, this is about, like I said, about twelve point three million dollar roughly, uh, cost on that. Uh, current value is assessed value of the site is just under a hundred thousand dollars, and anticipated final valuation's ten point four, ten, ten million four hundred twenty-five thousand. So based on that, that increment that will be created, again, more than ten million dollars of value added to the project, uh, should yield TIF to support two million four hundred sixty-eight thousand. The project identified more, you know, more uses than that. We identified just, just about two million four hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred, but again, that, you know, that, we'd, we'd limited the requested to that, uh, two million four hundred sixty-eight thousand. So the, the uses, really, they're kind of the standard uses that you'd see in a, in, in the community development law and tax increment financing. It includes grading, utility infrastructure, in, you know, in improvements, water, sanitary, storm sewer, uh, new streets and sidewalk improvements, electrical, it's got some, it'll have facade enhancements, so those, those enhancements above, above minimum code that are gonna really help, you know, again, enhance the aesthetics of the, of the area. And energy efficiency enhancements, again, same thing, enhancements above minimum codes. These are additional costs that the redevelopers putting into the project above and beyond minimum code requirements, um, concrete and curb, and then, you know, architectural engineering costs, some of the testing, some of those pieces, uh, land demo excavation costs, and again, those are all you know, eligible costs under the community development law, so, um, but out of those, about two point four, two, two million four hundred sixty-eight thousand would be the tax increment financing request. Looking at the statutory elements required for any redevelopment plan, I'll briefly go through them, you know, from a property acquisition standpoint. Redeveloper just purchased this site recently, so there's no public acquisition or, or disposition of property, so no, you know, nothing there. Uh, population density, again, fifty-three dwelling units approximately is the, is the, is the plan. Uh, mixed use, so that'd be, you know, upper story units, but again, that's, that's really in line with the comprehensive plan. That really is, uh, you know, so yes, there's an increase in population density, but it really is, it really does, uh, fall in line with, with what is expected there, what's, what's, what the plan is for the area. Land use coverage, as I mentioned, it's a four-story building with a twenty, approximately twenty thousand square foot, uh, building footprint. Um, it'll meet all land, land coverage ratios, um, yeah, same thing, you're really working closely to, to meet traffic pedestrian circulation plans, um. One of the things, so with fifty-three units, and then commercial, there will be a sixty-stall off-street parking, uh, you know, parking, uh, area, per surface parking lot, so again, more than, more than one-to-one from, from residential units. Additionally, there'll also be some on-street parking added to Mission Avenue as part of the overall development, so uh, don't see, foresee any parking issues at all, uh, with that, with, with the, the additional parking that will be added. Uh, no rezoning is necessary, uh, currently zoned B G M, so it's, it, it, uh, it meets zoning requirements in the area, and again, I'll briefly go through some of the, some of the points in the comp plan. Again, this really does hit, hit kind of the, the goals of the plan, old town, so these are, this is from the comprehensive plan. You know, promoting, you know, the Old Town redevelopment, promoting the redevelopment of Old Town through public-private partnerships, uh, revitalizing the area and making it attractive downtown district for people to live, work, and visit. You know, it, other recommendations for the Old Town District, implementing rehabilitation programs for properties in the Old Town area, uh, increasing housing style and diversity in Old Town, getting, again, bringing in different types of housing here, encourage and allow second-floor residential. So again, that's what we're, we're doing with this mixed-use building. Again, creating more housing types throughout, throughout the town, um, and then infill development, one of the preferred development concepts in the comp plan was talking about uh, redevelopment within city limits, so bringing in that infill, so, you know, as we look at, even, yeah, we're increasing population here, uh, through tax increment financing, but again, it's infill, it's not extending out, extending out utilities, it, it's, it's, uh, it's really looking at, uh, promoting the, the density that's, that's looked at, or you know, kind of recommended in the comprehensive plan. I'll go quickly to exhibit a the cost-benefit analysis. I already went through the numbers. Uh, ten point four two-five million dollar projected completed value, based on a hundred thousand dollar current valuation. That's where we get that increment. That's an annual tax shift of, uh, you know, with, with that full value, that'd be about two hundred thirty-five thousand dollars per year, so for fifteen years, that's what pays for those, that's what repays for those eligible public improvements, then after fifteen years, that goes back on the tax roll. Um, so we take what exists now as, as a ninety-seven thousand dollar assessed value and bring that up to over ten million dollars, and that's the long-term benefit. Uh, again, that, that two point four million dollars really does help this, you know, it's a twelve-plus million dollar project, but that really does, uh, make a big difference in, in making this project work, to making it, to making it, uh, able, able to happen, uh, with those eligible costs that, that we've identified, and have been identified in the redevelopment plan. Again, with, with both additional commercial space and housing space, uh, it really, it conforms to the comprehensive plan, as I mentioned. As far as, you know, one of the, one of the impacts is, is impact on employers and employees, well, you're gonna have additional housing, you're gonna have additional resources. It really just, uh, you know, be looking at making sure that traffic flows, uh, but, but again, with both increased need for services based on the population, plus the increased services based on the commercial, it really is gonna revive, the idea is to revitalize that, that area and, and be a catalyst for additional growth. Again, I mean, one of the things we look at is impact on student populations. That's one of the things in the cost-benefit analysis, so as I mentioned, you know, within infill growth, we're, we're not spreading that out, we're not, uh, expanding that infrastructure, need for a new school to be developed, again, with only fifty-three units. Statistically, if you look at this, uh, statistics for, for multifamily in Nebraska, uh, you know, the average student population for multifamily, really, it doesn't increase a lot. This, this, again, statistically, would be about five to eight additional students, uh, based on this, and again, these are two-to-one, one and two-bedroom units, so it really, um, should not be a significant increase on student population. Other than that, again, it really, uh, it's a, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the project.
Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Uh, we've been hearing a lot and heard it again tonight about affordable housing. So essentially, two questions for you, both related. First one, in terms of affordable housing, could you talk about price point, and will it be subsidized or standard rate, or how will it be affordable? And then second part of the question, what will be the square footage of the fifty units?
Yeah, thank you. Um, this will be market rate, so it's not, it's not subsidized in any way, so it's not like capital A affordable housing. Uh, so what, from a square footage perspective, you're gonna have one-bedroom units, approximately, on, on the average, seven hundred and sixty-eight square feet, uh, two-bedroom units are just over a thousand. Uh, two-bedroom units are just over a thousand square feet for the units. I may defer to Jeff on so, on, on some of the rents and pricing, but, but again, really, this, what this will do is, um, you know, it, it creates additional housing types. So this is, you know, you have, um, while it's not subsidized, while we're not setting rent restrictions on this, you are gonna have uh, new market rate units that allow a different type. Again, hopefully, some of those savings you see when you have in, you know, sort of mixed-use development like this is the savings and you, uh, your, your transit's less, you're, you know, doing things like that. But I may, I'll defer on the actual rents to, to, to Jeff.
Good evening. Jeff Gearing, uh, with Mercury Property Management, uh, forty-two, twenty-two Damport in Omaha. Uh, with regards to your question, Don, we're, market rate right now is shifting. It just depends where the construction costs come in. But right now, we're looking for a one-bedroom around the nine hundred and sixty-dollar range and roughly twelve hundred for a two-bedroom. Uh, I will amend that comment just a bit. Uh, with, we, there will be a C, CDBG fund uh, that will be applying for, for twenty percent. If, as much as we can try to do some affordable housing, we'll try to fit that in, depending on where the construction costs come in, as we all know, have been elevating quite a bit these days. So that is our goal.
Okay. Thank you both. Any other questions? Councilman Burns?
So, uh, I don't know, Mr. Willis or Mr. Gearing. Um, I just wanted to, I know, um, I think there was an Omaha World Herald article about building in October. So do you have a, a specified date, um, when you're gonna put a spade in the ground?
Well, Tom, right now, we're looking at, uh, getting our, uh, final construction, uh, plans put together. We're hoping, uh, we're, we're shooting for like twenty-sixth of Sep- uh, of our, of September and then get our final construction cost by the first, second week of October. If they're in line with what our pro forma came in at, then, uh, we'll be presenting for a, uh, uh, initially a foundation and grading plan to allow us to begin the grading process and treating the soil. And then, uh, the full construction plan's going at the same time. Hopefully those are gonna approved sometime, you know, in November. So our hope is to start sometime in October.
Okay. So, um, and then I do appreciate the questions, 'cause I was gonna ask the same questions that, um, Councilman Preister had. And then, uh, just, so, just by looking at everything you submitted, um, I, I feel like I always get a lot of questions about parking too. So the sixty stalls, uh, so the building's gonna come on the south side of, so like where Mission Ave is, so south, the building's gonna come all the way up and then sixty stalls are gonna be put in the back and then some of the stalls are gonna be abutting the fire department. Is that correct? And then, um, the hope is, is, uh, as far as on the south side with parking, is that we're, we're looking at diagonal parking? How many stalls exactly?
I don't know. Let me see if I have the exact number, but that, but that's exactly right. So yeah, the idea is to create that, create that parking behind with sixty stalls. You have more than one-to-one from a residential perspective. And then on the, and you're right, it's diagonal stalls is the, is the intent. I mean, it's not designed yet, but.
Both on the south side and also on the west side on Washington. And that'll be part of the, uh, the streetscape that'll be before, that the city will, will take care of. They will pay our portion of that, of course, at some point. But yeah, well, he's gonna get the exact count of what that is.
Thirty, but I'm trying to find the exact number here. Sorry about that. Oh, here we go. Yeah, so with the sixty stalls behind and then, and then really, you'd have thirty diagonal on the, on the sa- on the, on the, I guess the north side of the street, south, south of the building, directly adjacent, and then potentially some more additional parking further down.
Okay.
And also on Washington.
Yeah.
Perfect.
On the other side of the, of the elementary school.
Okay.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna make another comment. I wanna welcome Mercury here in Bellevue. I, I hope this project is a hit. I hope it sparks a lot of more movement and stuff happening downtown on Mission Street. So, it, it's been a process of being in that building when some of us started on the city council and being in this building and, and it, it, it's just ne- neat to see your diagrams and what you're bringing forward and what it looks like. I hope you're nothing but success. I hope this takes off and I hope that we see a big improvement to other facilities and buildings downtown and maybe even some additional new buildings in the future down there. So I appreciate you coming to Bellevue and doing business and I hope it all works out well.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Very much appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for the developer? Okay, a public hearing is open. Anybody else wanna speak regarding fifteen B? Please come forward. Okay, seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Uh, is there a motion? Councilman Burns?
Yep. Um, I'll move to approve resolution number twenty, twenty-two dash twenty-seven.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister. Any discussion or comments for the council? Councilman Burns?
Yep. Tammy, I just have a question. So after we approve, or well, just assuming that this is, we're gonna approve this, um, can you kind of take us through the process of what happens next? I mean, just kind of, sort of the next step, step by step?
Sure. Um, if the redevelopment plan is approved by city council tonight, uh, the next step would be the developer needs to finalize that TIF agreement. So, um, TIF agreement would have to be put on a later, uh, city council agenda and approved. Um, the developer would, after all the TIF is approved, then the developer could submit a permit. Um, then they would have to go through the building permit process, um, in order to get the plans reviewed and get their permit issued. I, I don't know if you want me to speak to timing or how that works.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to get an idea, 'cause I just feel like I always get a lot of questions and I like to give people specifics and so.
Timing is a little bit harder to nail down. So when, um, a building permit comes in, the permits department processes that and then they initially give staff a two-week review timeline. Um, a lot of that is dependent upon staff workload at the time. Uh, honestly, um, there are some times of the year that are busier than others. Um, if there's a foot of snow on the ground, it's not quite as busy as it is right now. So, um, we do our very best to get them reviewed in a timely manner. It also depends on the developer's engineer, um, and team as far as if any revisions are needed. Typically, there are revisions that are required to that permit. And so then there's a period of time where there may be some back and forth between, um, the developer, their engineers, their team, and city staff to make those revisions. So a lot of that timing is just kind of dependent on how that goes. But the developer would not, um, submit any kind of a permit until the, the TIF is finalized with that TIF agreement.
Okay. So, thank you. I really, I really appreciate that. And then I just have a couple other questions too, just as far as timing. And I don't know if this is more Doug or, or Tammy, but just as far as infrastructure, I just, I really wanna emphasize, 'cause I know a lot of our infrastructure, um, especially underground, um, is really, I mean, it's in horrible shape. So I mean, like, will our current infrastructure support this? And then, I mean, as far as timing with Alfred and Benish, so, 'cause I think they're using what we got in June of twenty nineteen, from HDR that looked at some of our underground infrastructure, but they're not really set to finish a lot of that until April of next year, I thought is what the contract said.
Right. The contract that was just recently approved by city council, um, basically the timing on that contract by Benish was they've already started the work, um, that began in the last couple weeks. Um, but it wouldn't go out for letting or, um, bid until end of April of twenty twenty-three. Um, and then construction is still to be determined in that contract, just because there's a lot of variables within that. But, um, yeah, I think best-case scenario, we're probably looking at spring of twenty-three to kind of define that streetscape, have a better reading on infrastructure needs and what needs to be done from the city's standpoint.
Okay. So, and then I don't know if this is Jim, you, or Doug, but I mean, I'm, I'm just kinda asking the questions. So, like, when we're moving forward, how will it all work? I mean, are we doing everything simultaneously? I mean, with the streetscaping, making infrastructure, um, improvements, um, if they start building, can you guys just sort of, like?
I can, I can maybe take that from a permitting standpoint and these guys can jump in. Um, obviously, the BGM zoning allows for what the developer wants to do. Um, so if they come in with a building permit, that permit can go through the process and can be approved. Um, the city doesn't wanna hold up the developer since that zoning is already in place. With the streetscape project, um, you know, the city planning, public works, um, we will have to coordinate the timing of that so as not to hold up the developer, but also to make sure that the streetscape gets done, um, you know, how the city wants to get it done and, and in a manner that the, you know, ultimately that the city believes will be good for the entire, for that portion of the Mission Avenue corridor. So it's going to take some timing as the streetscape project moves forward. Um, and again, staff will work with the developer so as not to hold them up, to keep things moving. But there will be some timing issues that will have to be worked out as both projects move forward.
Okay. So, and then the infrastructure that we do have now, underground infrastructure, so, you know, wastewater, sewer, um, what we do have in place will support this right now. Is that? Whomever wants to, I, the reason I just asked is I just wanna make sure that we don't run into any future issues, that everything goes smoothly. Um, I do wanna see this project come to fruition. But I just, I, I feel like there's just so many moving parts to it and I just wanna have the information if somebody's asking.
Sure. I know the wastewater, um, Epiphany, uh, has looked at it, our wastewater superintendent. Um, you know, we have a situation where the zoning will allow currently the fifty-three units. Um, so wastewater has taken a look at that. They've taken a look at, you know, the, the calcs in the study that have been done by HDR. You know, Epiphany is prepared moving forward to find a path forward. I think with older infrastructure, there's, there's always a little bit of unknown, just because the sewers are, you know, date back to the forties and fifties. So again, um, as a project moves forward, that's probably something, um, the city will have to be ready to deal with. But other than that, I don't know if there's anything that Doug wants to add as far as.
The infrastructure in Old Town is by definition old and, um, is in need of replacement. And as we work with the developers, it's, it's paramount that we look at that and get it, uh, in a condition to where we can meet the future needs of Old Town. And so we'll, we'll do the streetscape, uh, the stormwater study. And, um, at that point, we'll have an idea of what needs to be in place. We'll probably get a better idea also of what all the development in Old Town might look like. So we can build the infrastructure to that standard and to meet the needs of that new development. But that's why the streetscape study is so critical going forward. But right now, we can do what we need to do. Um, could we do it better with new infrastructure? You bet. But we gotta know what that is.
Okay. I just wanted to, to ask. I really appreciate you guys, so.
And timing-wise, it could snow from October through May and mess everything up, right? And we're behind on moisture. Okay, not getting out of here without me saying a few words on this one, because this one is, uh, one that's, uh, near and dear to me. I mean, I, I've been working on this project in different forms for, since, uh, my partner Dave Dunn was around, and that's been seven, six, six years. Seven years. Had a lot of different ideas, um, tried to convince people to, uh, you know, to go through with it, not only the city, but, uh, investors. Uh, we've got an investor that has, uh, come to Bellevue, um, Jeff Gearing and, and Perry Reed. And these guys have, uh, put a lot of work in it. Everybody thinks, oh, the investor's gonna come down here, they're gonna throw this nice fancy building up, and they're gonna make millions of dollars off the city of Bellevue and uh, that, that's not the case. These things are hard to get done. There's a lot of work, there's a lot of thought. Uh, this whole, the, all the city departments have worked on this. The finances are tough. I mean, they're, they're going through a twelve, thirteen million-dollar risk to make tens of thousands of dollars, at best, not millions of dollars. So I just wanna get that straight in people's, in the head, because this is a big risk. It's, it's a risk that, that obviously we're taking, because there's a lot of people that are behind it. Um, I believe in it. This will be a catalyst for Bellevue. It's, uh, you know, unless this world falls apart, which could always happen, but we have to build that infrastructure for the existing businesses that are down there. It's seventy years old. It's not, it's not for this project. It's for the houses, for the businesses that are down there now, for the people that are living there. The area's been underserved. There's not a grocery store. There's not, there's not places to, to, uh, get city services or, or public services from. Um, you got people going into, uh, the quick shop with grocery carts buying milk and cereal. I mean, these are people that should not be paying extra for their groceries, but yet they're forced to go to a quick shop to buy their, to buy their milk. Uh, the housing, um, talk about affordable housing. What this does, uh, there's a lot of affordable housing in Bellevue, especially Old Town. So what this'll do, it will move people out of some of the affordable housing. They'll wanna live in Old Town. It opens up some other housing that, that is affordable. So that's a step up for some of those people. This is, this is a great plan. Um, I originally was thinking it was gonna be four commercial buildings on those two lots, you know, six or seven years ago, but uh, the world is changing and getting those people above to, to buy from the businesses below, that's just the way things are done now. This is a, this is an awesome project. It's going to be successful and we're gonna build that whole community up better. And we, Doug said we can get by or we can make it better. We're gonna make it better. I mean, we have to make it better. So Jeff, I applaud you. Uh, thank, thank you, Todd. Thank you guys for all your service. Thank, thanks Perry Reed for investing in Bellevue, believing in us. It, it's gonna be a great project. And we've already got people calling, so, uh, I applaud you for all your efforts.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks to all the city officials.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, uh, fifteen B, we have a motion by Burns, seconded by Preister. Please vote.
All voting yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Fifteen C, resolution number two zero two-two dash twenty-eight. A resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to sign the municipal annual cer- certification of program compliance for two thousand twenty-two. Do you have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve resolution number twenty, twenty-two dash twenty-eight.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Casey. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen, current business, sixteen B, approve the contract with Justin Toms for custom farming, approximately forty acres at Highway seventy-five and Highway thirty-four in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. Do you have a motion? Councilman Prester? Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve item sixteen B, the custom farming contract with Justin Toms.
Second.
Motion by Prester, seconded by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen C, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the service agreement with Leo Daley for the design work for the Bellevue Public Library required to renovate the Bellevue Professional Building located at twenty-two oh six Longo Drive in an amount not to exceed three hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, plus reimbursable expenses up to one thousand dollars. Take a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve item sixteen C.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by McCaw. Comments or question? Please vote.
All voting yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item seventeen, administration reports. Comments must be limited to items on the current reports. Monthly reports are given at the first council meeting of each month. August report is attached. Is there any questions on the reports? Councilman Prester? Thank you, Mayor. Yes, uh, the quarterly report on insurance, and I didn't see these till today, so I apologize for no advance notice, but could, the insurance claims, can we get?
Can we get kind of an update on what's happening with that status?
I'll take that. So our quarterly update, Mr. Preister, was, uh, we met with our provider just to see where we're at year to date. Um, and if everything is acceptable moving forward. So nothing's changed within the plan. It was just kind of a precursor. To Rich, I think we'll meet with them again probably. In the next quarter to determine if there's any changes on our funding and then what, what we provide, but it was just a kind of a checkpoint in ours. To see how we're progressing. Last year we held our rates. Looks like we'll do the same this year, but uh, they wanna just make sure that we're on the radar for. Tracking in the right direction, so. Nothing, nothing, this is just a.
I, I was hoping that our claim rate and the amount of claims would continue to go down with our wellness program and. The proactive things we've done. So when I saw it, I'm just hoping that all that works out and that our. Costs don't escalate, but they continue to at least level out.
Yeah, we had some experience that was a little bit above the radar, but that's anticipated to go down, so it's. Again, they just want to get, get in front of us to kind of update us where they're at and what our experience is, but I think we're, we're gonna be okay, so.
Okay, good. Thank you for that.
Councilman Burns?
Jim, will you talk to us about the museum? Did, you put?
Regarding?
I would, well, I'm just kinda asking you. It says you met with developer for museum project. I mean, could you maybe speak to that a little bit?
Sure, so, um, Councilwoman Welch has kind of become our liaison. There seems to be a lot of miscommunication, whether it's on our end or on the museum's end. I think, you know, two council meetings ago, it was asked whether or not we were. Um, kicking the depot out or ch- moving the depot, which is not, it's never been the case. So the discussions have been where our lease agreements are with the museum, where we go forward. There's also an RFP that, uh, the Wimmer Collection is out there. I think most of you guys traveled down to see the Wimmer Collection. Am I correct? So there's an RFP out, um, as far as a potential location for. The Wimmer Collection and possibly the museum, so that's underneath discussion and then what's the city's participation level? And how we move forward. So those things are kind of working through. All we've heard is they've got three. Uh, finalists on the locations. One of them is in Bellevue, so. Naturally, we'd like to keep it here in Bellevue and we're working to work our way through that, uh, but. With Councilwoman Welch, she could probably speak more about the day-to-day meetings that she's had with them, but. It's just working through to eliminate any type of miscommunication or. Now, I, I hate to say it, but I had a lady then Greenwood called me and said that she had heard that we were forcing the museum out of the community, so there's some. Communication that goes on internally, not from our end. So we were able to have that discussion, rectify that, and that's what Councilwoman Welch is doing, is making sure that. Board knows that's not the city's intent or interest. Um, I don't know if that answers your question, but that's.
And I asked those questions, I think, about vacating, cause there was a letter that they did receive that said they had ninety days to vacate. The train depot from the premises, so I don't know that that was a misconception. Or a miscommunication, cause it was in writing, um.
Can I answer that? So.
Can you kind of maybe explain like the backdrop of them, like maybe having a year or somehow that getting extended? Maybe that was miscommunication?
We have not finalized future, but we have not, uh, put them out. So if you go back in time. With the train depot, and I think I explained this last time, is the train depot was in disrepair. The decking was dangerous to anybody that was uh, going into the train depot. And then inside the train depot, it was piled full of what was to be used for a garage sale. Um, this stuff was piled as high as like halfway to the ceiling. Our guys couldn't get in to access the electrical panel, so there was discussions of. A fire hazard as well as a safety hazard. The intent and interest of what that depot was put there for was for the public's use and access. It wasn't being lived up on, on that expectation, so we'd asked them on several times to clean up the deck, fix the decking and clean it up. It came down in the end, it was either you do that or you can take your depot and leave because it was a hazard. I got their attention. They fixed the decking. They cleaned up the inside of that depot. It's open for tours. That's, our only intent was to get that cleaned up and it has since been cleaned up, so we're on the right path with them. I think there was a discussion out there. I just heard somebody asked if we were kicking the caboose out. That's something new that we haven't heard. But again, it's this miscommunication, not sure where that's driving at, but. Our only intent on that depot was to get it cleaned up and get it used for what, or get it. Make it available to the public in a safe and practical manner, which hadn't happened, so. It's said it was an attention getter, do it or else. Uh, Bree, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but. We had multiple discussions with them to fix that and it just didn't occur, so.
What happened so, but with that letter, that, did that mean that? Cause we broke the lease agreement, or like the agreement that we did have with them, is that? Can you guys talk to that? Are we kind of on uncharted territory? No, that's okay. I just want some clarification then.
No, that's okay. Uh, I started working on this back in twenty nineteen, right after my appointment. It's something that Tim Buckley had worked on at Adams and Sullivan. Long before I got here. Um, there are a lot of lease agreements out there. There are some situations where we owned the land, but they owned the building. Or we owned the building and they owned the land. Um, there was some of the issues with the decking and them using the depot for kind of garage sale type items. Um, but we did end up breaking the leases. That is, that's accurate. Um, I think you've, have seen that letter. Uh, we did break the lease agreements. They are responsible for the repair and maintenance on. Um, the depot and the log cabin and they are responsible for the utilities on both of those properties. Um, originally, there was the request for them to move the depot because it currently sits on city property. Um, they were, I believe it was ninety days, if I remember correctly, um, to move it. And then there was discussion and it was extended until August of this year, twenty twenty-two. Uh, we have notified them in writing, I believe it was in email. Um, that we do not intend on, um, it was an email. That we do not intend on asking them to leave because we know they're working in conjunction to try to make this bigger, kind of better. Um, train depot area, hopefully here in Bellevue. And so we are working closely with them to allow them to stay there. We don't want them to have to move or move the building twice. Um, and hopefully they can kind of get this new project area worked out and we can work on a seamless transition into this new area. Um, so they do have that in writing that they are not, um, asked to leave at this point.
So, okay, so. Um, but then, uh, just. At this point, since those lease agreement, or that lease agreement is broken, we have cut funding from the museum and helping them out in, in any manner? Is that?
I wouldn't say we cut funding. Um, they are responsible for the utility bills, starting in August of twenty twenty-one. Which we actually are still paying the Black Hills Energy on, um, cause that hasn't been switched over. And then the OPPD just got switched over, I believe it was June of this year. So we were paying OPPD even until June of this year. Um, collectively, I think those bills were about five hundred, six hundred-ish for a full year, so it's not a significant.
Amount.
Amount, yeah.
Okay. Thanks, I appreciate you guys.
You're welcome.
Okay, and if, if I can jump back, I think our, our whole intent is to try to clean these lease agreements up and. Define boundaries of who has what responsibility. Our first month in office here, I recall the church steeple was in disrepair and there was a lot of discussion of. Who's going to repair that? And at one point, they were talking about they were going to do a fundraiser. Now, we own the building. But the museum was gonna do a fundraiser, um, as this thing had drug out over a period of time. What probably was a forty thousand dollar repair escalated to almost eighty thousand. And we're at risk of losing a lot of the interior of the church, so. When you look at who is responsible, um, these lease agreements were a little murky. So we stepped in and fixed the. Fixed the, the church, the steeple on the church and did what we were supposed to do, but. The way these leases were kind of get a little confusing. So our whole intent with that was to try to clarify that and get ownership on both sides here. Um, it only makes sense that if they're, it's their building. That they participate in some costs, which would be the utilities, so they're responsible for the outcome. It's not that we're cutting funding, it's just. Define the lines of who, who gets what part of the responsibility. It's unfortunate, it gets read out as that we're. Uh, being mean to them, I guess, and that wasn't the case here, so it's just ownership is the best or, best thing we'd want to say. And I think long-term, depending on where they land. Um, if this project comes to fruition on this second site that they're looking at. Um, lease agreements and our participation will be, will be different, but, um, we'll define those things as we move forward, so.
So we don't have, so we're not like looking at doing it, like renewing anything with them at this point, or?
We've held off solely because the RFP is out, um, if they end up picking up the train. We don't want to go through the motions of. Signing a lease agreement and then turning around two months later and they're going to build at another location, then we'll have to go through something else over there, so it's. There's just no agreement in place at this point, except they're in writing from us. They're, they're allowed to stay on our land, so we're in our park.
Okay.
So I'm just gonna add to that, um. I, my company manages a lot of properties. If you're not using the property for its intention, if you're not paying the bills, if you're not. Keeping the property up, you're gonna get a thirty day notice. That means get out, cause you're not meeting your end of the deal. When I came to this job. There, one of the things I ran on was accountability. People are gonna be accountable. They're not gonna take advantage of the city's taxpayers' money and waste it. So, we're holding these organizations accountable. Doesn't matter if you're the chamber, doesn't matter if you're habitat, doesn't matter if you're the museum. You have to do what you say you're gonna do. So that's all, it's not a matter of being mean, it's just do what you're supposed to do. Sometimes you gotta send out a notice. Um, I'm, I'm tired of rehashing this because they were the ones not keeping up with their commitment. The city gave them a notice, they're keeping it up. I'll cancel a thirty day get out notice if you're gonna make it right. So I don't see anything wrong. I stand behind how the administration's handling this. It's, it's the right thing to do, so. And, and it doesn't matter what organization you are. So be accountable. The city expects us to be accountable and all we're requiring is for everybody else to be accountable to us, so, uh, it, it's that simple. Any other questions? Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. On that note of accountability to the taxpayers, uh, a shift over, it lists on the. Administrator's report. Uh, assessing sites or looking at a library in West Bellevue. And I don't know if that's Southwest Bellevue or Northwest Bellevue, but I'll, I'll ask for that, but I'll make a comment first. Because. Siting a second library is gonna be expensive. And a second library, although it's nice and convenient, it could possibly be better served by a mobile library. Rather than putting it in one place where it's still not close to people. And when I look at the cost of a library, even a satellite library. Could end up with staffing and other expenses of a million dollars. And in terms of accountability, we've moved the current one almost a mile closer to the center of Bellevue. So I like that, I like the new location, but as we look at options. I'm, I'm just hoping that our accountability there is possibly a mobile library and. Uh, taking a little bit of time with this because it's gonna be another very expensive proposition. So if you would comment, please, Jim?
Yep, point well taken. You know, I think at one point the discussion was to move our library to the western flanks away from this side of the city. We've always felt it was important that our library stays within this demographic territory here. Where it's probably, it's got its highest u- usage. So not to ignore the western side, how do we serve the western flanks as Bellevue continues to grow and is it an annex? Is it a portable library? All these are discussions now to say that long-range planning for us is, do we start looking now for something three to five years out? Is it an annex? Is it a portable? I don't have an answer to that. It's kind of the argument you have with the library now is everybody's phones, who, who goes to a library? So as we're looking out over the horizon, what's our next step? And how do, what can we do to serve the western side of, of Bellevue? Um, and what is the best, cause there's a, a population surge on that side too. So it's just to get ahead of that curve today and start looking over the horizon, but we don't have any. Solid answers. You know, one of the things is not to build a building, but to lease something. Do you put something in a, an area that's easily accessible? Um, is there gonna be public transportation? All those things have to be taken into consideration, but it's just looking over the top of the hill today and. Doing some long-range planning as to what do we do? Is that, that answer your question?
Yes, thank you for that. That's helpful. I- in terms of the newer developed area, which would be to the south. There may not be the same demographic as to the north in the area that I represent, which would be more comparable to Old Town and to the area. The library currently serves, and yet people in the south also have a need and would like to have one. That's why I'm glad we're taking time looking at options and maybe something portable that can get us some. Information about usage might be a good interim step before we invest in more staff. A mobile unit can utilize existing staff. I, I see lots of opportunity in the interim. For maximizing any investment before we actually invest, whether it's. And I like using these old buildings and retrofitting as we did here and we're doing with the new library. So, uh, if we do in west, there's both north and south that would like to have one, but is that practical? So, uh, just in the discussions, I wanted to have my input.
Took us twenty-five years to move this one. Maybe not my lifetime, but we, we wanted to get it on the radar and start talking about it. Fully aware that Northwest Bellevue probably fits better of a demographic model of who may need. The library and sense of technology that they may not have in their household. So how do you do that? How do you serve the other side, the southern side? Those are things we'd like to start working on now. Well, I mean, we still have this library to complete. But at least get that into the mix to say, what is our long-range plan here? So is it three to five years out? Do we do something for an annex and what that looks like? I have no idea at this point, but we'd like to not eliminate that thought, so.
Good, and I like the thought of the long-range planning rather than just the immediate, so kudos to you and everybody working on that.
Rich doesn't like it cause I'm spending his money, but we'll get over that. Am I right, Rich?
Okay. My plan is it will be in his lifetime, so. Any other comments? Okay, we will file the reports, um, takes us to eighteen, closed session, which we. Do have, uh, eighteen A is litigation update and discussions regarding petition. So, Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that the city council. Going to closed session at this time for the protection of the public interest. The subject matter to be discussed. In closed session are confidential litigation updates and discussion regarding a petition. The following individuals will be included during all or some of the closed session. All council members. Mayor Rusty Heike, Jim Risto, Bree Robbins, Annie Matthews, Mark Albert, Susan Cluth.
Okay, so that's a move?
That's a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by McCaw, to go into closed session. Any discussion? Please vote. Thank you. The city council has voted to go into closed session at this time. The subject matter to be discussed in closed session is confidential litigation updates and discussion. Regarding petition items for the protection of the public interest, the following individuals will be included in closed session. All city council members, Mayor Rusty Heike, Jim Risto, Bree Robbins, Annie Matthews, Mark Albert, Susan Cluth. It is now. Seven twenty-seven PM and we will go into closed session here in the chambers.